First up on the agenda is public comments. There's nobody in the room here. I'm not seeing anyone. Just verifying that there's, there's nobody. On the zoom. Yep, I don't see any other than board members and FDB and Richie Pump. Okay. Item two on the agenda, finance and operations. First up is the treasures report, which we have to accept.
Make a motion to accept.
Do you have a second?
I have a second. But I didn't find it. There's none of them.
The budget status reports in the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the treasurer's report is different.
Ah.
Treasurer's report is one page sheet that just goes in and out of balance, a balance sheet, so to speak.
It's not bad.
And then, yep.
Yeah, it was supposed to post it, it's not there, so.
Okay. It's all right. I, I don't think, I mean, the treasurer takes care of that.
You don't have to accept it.
No.
No.
Okay, so we don't have, we can just move on?
We can just move.
Okay. So two B is the MAU new cafeteria tables bid?
So I will, well.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll put that, the summary together with, so basically the synopsis of what, what's going on. The high school right now is the, the one with the greatest need. Arlington Memorial has relatively new tables. Fisher, they aren't using the cafeteria to eat and we've already started cycling through the Union Elementary Schools. For new tables, they, they have pocket tables in a lot of the elementary schools. So this was the, the bigger project and the last couple of years under COVID and our food service operations, the way that the reimbursements were structured, it was very profitable for our program. And we've made so much money that we're now in a situation where we have to spend it down or the feds are going to take it back. So this is an allowable expense for those excess funds.
So under project summary and estimated costs, it said these tables and chairs will be with excess food service funds.
They'll, they'll be purchased with.
There was no other word there and I was assuming that's what that was.
Yeah, but she doesn't, she wants to work with some stakeholders, so I don't know if they're going to put a subcommittee of like students and teachers and the administration together to pick how they want to lay things out. So they don't know exactly what the quantities of each type are going to be, but they do know that the lowest bid was, I think, suburban.
So, and maybe I'm misunderstanding this, I, I read this as this, this was high school replacement? And not, but you just mentioned all the other schools?
So just in case people are wondering, why are we only doing the high school? Because we already told all the other schools.
Okay.
And just, I guess another question kind of in that similar line is that SU was making the purchase for furniture going into the high school.
So because of the food service funds are non-tamed at the SU level, it has served all of the buildings?
Got it. So the, go ahead.
So does it say in this that the money is coming out of the food service? I see that.
There was a kind of a word left off in that sentence, so I think that should be corrected.
Didn't make it clear.
And Wendy, it sounded like you, you started in with a question?
Yeah, um, she mentioned that it was the lowest bid, but when I was reading it, it said it was the only bid. So naturally.
It was the only bid that met the requirements of all.
No, 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 the other two people, the other two people didn't even respond, is what she, was originally.
They, they did respond, but they are considered what, what's referred to as non-responsive because they didn't meet all the criteria.
Oh, I understand, thank you.
Yeah.
They didn't sign the end notes.
Thank you.
So the action requested is to, would be to, just for clarification, would be to move forward with the bid from suburban?
Yes. And so with the final details actually be worked out, but there's no general fund money, it's not going to be, you know, any impact to current budget or next year's budget, this is all going to be excess funds and the current food service fund. It happens, we lose it or we lose it, correct?
So to that end, could we get a motion to, to move that we accept the suburban bid?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
And is there any discussion? Very good. All those in favor, say aye, saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
We won't have her adjust that.
Thank you.
Okay, so item three on the agenda is policies. Uh, one was the nondiscriminatory mascots in school branding, uh, which we have to adopt. And the second is students who are homeless, which we have to warrant, so we'll take those in two sec, separate.
I'm making a motion to, um, accept the nondiscriminatory mascot in school branding. Policy.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it.
And any discussion?
Can we amend that to adopt?
Instead, okay, adopt, not accept.
Would, would you accept that amendment?
Yes.
And the second?
The person who seconded it?
Yes, I'm sorry, yes, I'll be happy to, it's fine.
Great, thank you. Um, any further discussion? All those in finger, all those, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, uh, policy for, policies under number five oh oh eight. Students who are homeless, we need to warn that. Could I get a motion to warn policy five zero zero?
I'll warn. I'll make the motion to warn.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So carries. Consent agenda. We can, we can do this one as the package, uh, which includes minutes, warrants, leave of absence, retirements, resignations and nominations, all of that. All those materials were in the packet. Uh, could we get a, could I get a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion. So the consent.
And as presented. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion?
I had sent a comment back, this is Nicole, I had sent a comment back, there's reference in the introductions that I was the chair of the Arlington Board and I just wanted to make sure that any reference, I'm not the chair of the Arlington Board. That's Todd Wilkins. So I had, I had replied when the minutes were sent out and I would just ask that the minutes be updated to reflect that change.
So how, those with more experience?
Uh, Richard should be, Richard is listening, he's in the meeting, so we inserted that.
So can we accept it? Accept the whole consent agenda?
Subject to changes, I have a couple of board changes, I don't consider them important, that important to the sense, I'll just send them to Richard and we'll.
Okay.
Up here.
Okay, so we can handle that. Any other, um, any other discussion? All right, all those in favor of, uh, accepting item four on the agenda, the consent agenda, please say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay.
Do you have the hard copy of the warrants to sign once those present have signed? I'll put it in the docu-sign for the folks that are here. Um, and just one item, no, I did update that with the current table.
And we'll give that to Jim after, or you.
Yeah, I'm there.
Um, and item five on the agenda, superintendent's report.
Good evening. Uh, tonight's report is going to be conducted by Director of Student Sports Services Kate Abbott, Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment Melissa Tannenbaum, Director of Finance Ray Gordon and Assistant Superintendent Laura Woodrow. Got a whole show for you.
You, you. For you.
Yeah. We realize parts may be repetitive.
So.
Allow me to share your screen.
Yes, it is, yeah. So thanks for having us tonight. Uh, this is a combined effort to give the SVSU Board a large overview of, uh, the grants, um, that we support at the district level. So the first part will be the programming. Sorry, I started talking. Yeah, happy to help you. Okay. Uh, the first part is the programming side and again, some of you have heard some pieces, but we're going to really state the SVSU level as we, we highlight the grants and then Renee's going to take you on a deeper dive. It's going to look a little bit similar to budget season, but we want you to have a clear picture from the district, district perspective of what that looks like. Uh, so to, to jump right in, um, as a reminder, for the people that are listening, I'm actually going to save this on the front end tonight. We always are looking for feedback for the, the grants that we support. Most of the grants we're sharing with you tonight are federal grants and on our website, www.svstu.org, on the homepage, there's a recovery button with the feedback form that's checked regularly. Uh, if you have any feedback about any of the grants, um, or ideas, um, because it is grant season. And then we also had a community night in March, um, where we invited community members to come meet with us. Um, we've been meeting with our principals and, uh, collecting feedback from, again, the different people that have shared on the website. So as a reminder, we have, uh, the large SR grant and we are now currently working off of the SR two. And, uh, we've shared the allotment amount and, uh, for SR two and we want to focus on the big SVSU investments. So we're getting on some of the investments in SR two that will end at the end of this upcoming September would be the middle level robotics club. That is for, um, all of our middle level students. We've started some, uh, purchasing of those STEM resources and professional learning that, um, is incorporated in that. We also have, um, some access to professional learning materials, including ZOMA's and, um, some trauma cohort. And all of the payment for people taking those outside of contracted hours would be the ones that we would highlight. But there's a long list of other investments for SR two. And so that will expire on September thirtieth of twenty twenty-three. And, uh, we will, we're, we're working also at the same time on SR three, which is on the next page. And you're going to notice if you look at the, if you look at the screen, um, some of you have a hard copy in front of you, but there's some red. And the red's important and this is for this board in particular tonight. We, uh, SR three has a, uh, a different rule. And the rule is to make sure that we're updating our community when we're making changes based on feedback we've received. And none of the, the changes that we're making, um, change the recovery plan that our community decided upon, but, but they are changes. And so tonight we want to publicly share, um, with you, this is the first time, uh, to share some of those changes. And collect any feedback anyone might, that anyone might have. So I'm gonna, um, on the, on the top part, do you want to highlight any of the top part?
Sure. Sure, I would say that with, again, with SR three, that we'll start at this, at that next October and go for one full, full year. The updates would be those after-school programming, um, in every building that we have, uh, the summer programming that we're doing and, um, a lot of carryover. The big piece that I know that Renee will be involved in a lot of is, for SR three is construction.
So in the areas, in the areas that you can see on the screen that are highlighted in, in the red, um, we were able to, uh, hire a variety of staff to support the needs of our students. And there's a, a couple of unique ones that we've been able to add to the list. What, do you want to tell them about the nurse?
The nurse? Oh, the, yeah, so we actually have a, uh, it's, she's a psychiatric nurse practitioner. And so when children are, um, struggling with, uh, dysregulation and they're on a waitlist to try to get in, uh, we can actually bring that service to them in the school. And the psychiatric nurse practitioner can come and observe them in the school environment and say what needs to be adjusted or what kind of recommendations to give that doctor to help that child, um, get the best care.
Um, another position that you'll notice that it's a change is we, we've talked to you about the board certified behavior analyst and, um, often we've struggled with finding someone to hire. So we've also been able to look for some similar contracted behavioral consultants as well, so. Anything I need to add to that?
Uh, no, just really how amazing both the BCBA's and the family engagement specialists are.
Yes.
And how, um, they've really been, um, wonderful in getting families, uh, into schools and supporting their learners' needs.
Uh, you'll notice that the administrative S R to recovery is a carry forward from SR one and SR two and supports, um, all the procurement processes, um, supports all the staffing that goes along with managing these particular grants and also partners with the Department of Finance and the Department of Operations, um, as we move into the construction piece. And then the last, uh, for SR three, um, update we wanted to provide is that we were constantly trying to monitor our system based on data. And so we need some upgrades to our, our data systems to make sure we're getting the best data to support our plans. And so, do you want to talk about a little bit of the hearing?
Yeah, so we invest so much in our, we have wonderful teachers here and we invest greatly in our curriculum work and the amazing instruction that is provided. But if a child has a hearing loss or a fluctuating hearing loss that's coming and going depending on when they have hearing inspections, they can't hear that, they can't benefit from that. So our audiologists, we're investing in some tools to help our audiologists really get good data on the hearing of our, our little ones and even our big ones, because with the pandemic, we found hearing loss at middle school even that we missed in, in earlier years. So without that preventative intervention, we, kids can't benefit from the instruction we provide enough because they can't hear it.
And then the final piece is, uh, our human resource department, again, advocated and really want to, um, continue to work on, um, pulling staff through exit interviews, which is a piece of data that we can improve to improve our programming as well. And so these are all part of data collection as part of our, our MTSS system. So those are some, some updates based on feedback we received for some ideas and they already align with the goals in our plan. So, uh, the next grant that we receive annually is the title grant. And, uh, you'll notice that we're not talking in money because that's what Renee's going to be doing. No, we want, we don't want to steal her thunder. So, uh, we received the title, uh, grant and it, um, rolls from July one to June thirtieth. So we are currently writing next year's, um, title grant right now, uh, which also requires us to, um, collaborate. And there also is a title button on our website. But we just, we're highlighting some of the SVSU investments, which are, um, tutoring, the art teachers and the music teachers, um, Laura, not to find out how, how expensive music instruments can be. As we try to, um, make sure that we're replenishing with the music departments and, and a lot of family engagement for both the art and music, um, investments for this project and our title resource. And then you can see the very important people, um, that are there under those title investments of our coaches and coordinators. Then our next big grant.
So our IDP grant is, um, an annual grant and we pay for direct services for kids, um, out of this funding. So school psychology, physical therapy, our audiologist, adaptive therapy, also some software such as Learning Ally and summer services for kids that need back support.
Medicaid is our next area. So our Medicaid is billed, uh, each month and so we have a rolling allotment, um, throughout the year. And what we use our Medicaid for is we use our Medicaid to prevent, uh, disability. So to provide services to children that don't yet have IPs in order to keep them, um, from being at risk to thriving again. So we have vision services, motor services, our Medicaid first are paid right out of Medicaid reimbursement monies as well as, um, BCBA supports and audiological supports for non-disabled learners. And the final grant we highlighted, uh, this spring is the Medicaid Administrative Claiming or MAC grant, which we partner with the Vermont Department of Health. And, uh, annually, um, this helps with a lot of our health and wellness initiatives, um, including the SNAP memberships for SVSU nurses. So they have a mechanism to take medical records, um, our tooth tutors, eight oh two smiles, eight oh two smiles, uh, that are working in our schools. And, um, also our team coordinator stipends. So at this point, we're going to turn this over for Renee for the second part of our presentation. Renee, can you help me?
What do tooth tutors do?
What do tooth tutors do? And I have to, and Ray, where they, their names now is eight oh two smiles, that's Vermont has, so I'm trying, I'm working on my own language. Um, they try to do, it's preventative care because that's what we can use Medicaid money for. And we have three in our district, uh, there's one that supports, um, Arlington on a, it's a hygienist on a part ten basis. And then we have one that's supporting, um, the middle school and another one that's picking up the rest of, of the high school and the elementary schools. And they do preventative, they do lessons in the classroom. I remember when I was teaching, they would come, um, during the year, uh, toothbrush in hand, tooth, every child went home with a toothbrush and, um, some toothpaste, but every year there's a different lesson that's developmentally appropriate for the H level. Um, and then they, they try to connect, uh, students that might have some kind of, um, dental need with a, uh, local community support. So they're one.
They're not actually doing hygienist work, I mean, you know, actually cleaning teeth in the classroom. Like, get that, you'd say that probably starts with, uh, Dr. Brady and.
Yes, yes. Correct, so there, there, there actually is, um, different, um, so right now coming, I'm going to, I feel very confident coming out of, the pandemic that we are now fully functioning with through hygienist, hygienist and they're doing preventative care and they are making, um, consultations as needed. So, but, uh, that's a great question and I do remember that happening.
But we don't actually have dental chairs and rooms for doing teeth with equipment for twine, tooth, 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 other than toothbrushes?
We do have dental chairs.
Chairs. We do.
We do have dental chairs, yes.
Are they all being staffed at this time? Probably not.
Yeah.
But we still do have the chairs. You have the chairs. Yes, we do.
Correct.
But, um, okay. Do we have the resources to use all the chairs? No.
What do you want me to do? No, I was just, I didn't want to share my screen while yours was talking. Okay. So, um, anybody that's remote, I do have each of these, um, also posted, um, with the, uh, packet tonight. Um, I'm going to start with the annual grants, the ones that, um, they just left off with. So on the packet that I just handed out highlighted, the first page is highlighted in yellow, so that's the Consolidated Federal Program, CFP. And as I always refer to it, a lot of different ways. And typically, uh, during budget season, um, I try to, alongside going through the SU budget, give, uh, the boards an update as to where we are with these grants every other time this year. So this is kind of structured similarly to how I present most of the budgets. So for the CFP one that we have here in front of us, um, I've kind of taken our approved budget and has, have presented it to you here as, um, various budget categories. So we're looking at all the salaries and our stipends, benefits, contracted services and so on and so forth. On the back page or the second page, if you're looking at the PDS, is the same budget, but it's actually broken down by function. So it's kind of just splicing and dicing the information in, in two different ways. So, um, with both the annual grants that I'm going to go over tonight, um, as Laura said, they do run July one to June thirty. However, we do have twenty-seven months to spend them. So what that essentially means is we're awarded an allocation annually. Once we close out our books from the previous year, any unspent money, they give back to us. And money from the previous year, if there was anything left over, that's the money that they spend first. So the AOE is tracking our quote-unquote oldest money. So hopefully in the event that we don't ever lose any of, any of the funds. So the oldest money gets spent first. Then we're basically spending the rollover funds and then into the allocations. So because of that, we do tend to keep, you know, somewhat of a, a cushion to carry forward year to year. So with the CFP grant, Consolidated Federal Programs this year, um, our allocation of taking all the titles combined was about three point four seven million. With our rollover, we're at about four point four two million. And you can see what you have before you is the, the approved budget. So we've budgeted to spend just over four million this year. So far in Humbert and spent to date, we're just over three million. So we will have, again, a cushion to carry forward into next year, which is, is a good thing. We do have parameters that as far as Title One goes, that we can't carry forward more than fifteen percent. So we do keep a watchful eye on that to make sure that we're, we're near that amount, um, but certainly not in excess of that. So, um, and I do have notes at the bottom, uh, to kind of highlight what you're seeing above or kind of to, to define them a little bit better. Indirect cost is something that we don't typically see except when we're talking about grants. So this is essentially a very complicated application that we have to go through and submit to the Agency of Education annually. And then they will basically review our data and make sure it aligns with the, the data that they pulled from, uh, the stat book. And we're basically derived a, a percentage. That percentage can be applied to the grants as our expenditures. And it's basically offsetting money that comes in. So as we're spending the money, we can apply that indirect rate to that to offset the cost of administering the grant. So I estimate that actually in the SU budget as offsetting revenue to my department. So that's how we use that.
Is, is the other part of the four million is that offsetting revenue, but we pass for, is it separate, uh, uh, book, so to speak?
No, well, it's, it's offsetting revenue, so that, what you see in the assessments is net.
Yeah, it's this, this money?
Yes.
And the other SR monies and so forth?
Nope, they're totally separate. So it's just, just the offsetting revenue of the indirect monies is what's going on.
Just, just that?
Yes.
Twenty nine. Okay. So. Um. I mean, given years of this, I should understand this, but, but, uh, the people that work under these grants and get paid under these grants, are they in our, what we pass as a, a warrant every month?
Yes.
Okay. But they're, they're not actually in the, uh, budget that we deal with?
Not in the general fund budget, I can quote it on the past because.
That's what I thought, so I.
Right.
Cause we just.
Got our application now for next year. It tends to be pretty close annually, but we never really know. So it's, it's hard to say, you know, in November, when we're doing that, what's going to happen six months to a year and a half months. So that's why I, I do keep it.
So do, does this board actually make decisions about the use of those monies? Other than approving?
Yeah.
Accepting the grants?
Hiring, hiring of physicians for our warrants coming through.
But we don't, we don't have, um, any review of programming you do, um, like today.
Okay, I think if you're, if you're asking about, the, the, part of it is looking at the intent of each title and we take feedback, we want feedback. We, we want to, to hear part of having, you know, a community meeting and part of coming here is to make sure that people have information or know who to reach out to if they want to have a conversation about providing, you know, input into some ideas they might have. And that happens. That I, I think it's, it's great to have someone reach out and say, hey, I, I, I have questions.
That I, I think it's, it's great to have someone reach out and say, hey, I, I, I have questions about, specifically, I get most questions about Title Four money. Stakeholders from our community, a lot of them ask about different ideas they have and how it lines. And then meeting with our principals and principals to make sure that. And that's what I'm doing right now, is meeting with the, with the principals of the school teams.
Right, but this board doesn't actually make decisions about the programming, the way you're divvying up the pie and the programs that you construct and support.
Correct, we submit investments on behalf of the, of stake, all stakeholders that are then approved and then it goes.
But they're approved as a stakeholder.
Correct, right, yes. Yeah, so they all have to be allowable uses of the funds, and they are very rich with their revenue.
Yeah, I'm just clarifying this, because it may not be obvious that other people would not be in here as well.
I think the great, for title, like an example, we have, what, we have over eighty investments? Almost ninety this year. Yeah, and just single, little tiny investments. Every single one of those is, we write against this money and then it's sent to be approved. So we can't even start accessing that investment, we can't do anything.
And something.
The investment is approved, and then it comes back, and then we can start to unpack it, to, to implement it. And we have one year.
And you have to show how it's going.
And now, yes, we have to show evidence about how it's worked for each one.
Yeah, yeah. And all of this money, all of it is reimbursement based. So we have to spend and then apply to get the money back.
Right, you have to wait to, to, to see if you're going to get, even get the money back.
No, so I mean, as long as the, the investment has been approved, and essentially, the, the work that myself and my staff do is making sure that it gets coded correctly on how we build the grant, it then has to match our expenditure reports that we have to upload to the agency. And, you know, that's, we have to do amendment from times if, you know, if we had a position, particularly for a board certified behavior analyst, like we would put them in as a salaries and benefits, but then we couldn't find one, so I ended up paying a contracted service as a different account number. So I have to go in and do an amendment to move the money from salaries and benefit lines to, I got new services.
But, so, it's a, where does the money come from initially?
Out of our bank account.
And that, that's out of the.
The S V S U, so.
The general fund.
Yes.
So they reverse the general.
So essentially, right now, we're, we're working on a quarterly reimbursement. Once we get into construction, I think we're going to have to move to a monthly reimbursement model, because the tax overlay is going to be a lot.
But this is a state.
They used to front the money, and then they stopped doing that.
It's a state thing, I, I'm kind of, I, I know you can't change the state rules, but why the delay when every town works on the same town meeting day and.
It's just the way that the agency has structured how they're handling the federal money. So I think they have the money that they're holding on to. And then they're just doling it out as we spend it. Not the same. I think municipalities, I think a lot of municipalities have in fronted money. For, well, especially ARCA funds, I think that they, you have money that they actually, so. Okay, so that was the CFP.
Right, before we move on, this is Nicole. Before we move on too much, just to make sure that I'm understanding Ray's point. Because I appreciate that he's making a point here. The, the six million, basically six million dollars that's identified in those three documents for instruction. So those are salaries for direct instruction. That's in addition to the salaries that are in the S V S U general budget that we approve.
That is correct.
Okay. And then in terms of tracking metrics and performance data for any of these positions, I know at a district level, at, at minimum, there is a cost per pupil analysis that's consistently done to try to use for measuring and monitoring effectiveness of financial resources. And then there's all kinds of.
Applies there.
I know, but then there's all kinds of testing.
It's not in that, that per pupil spending.
I understand that. What I'm asking for is how do we?
How do we track it? How do we?
How do we evaluate effectiveness? How do we know that our, that our, however many millions of dollars is being spent with intent and effective?
So I, I can speak to.
This isn't an answer for, I don't, like, this is just more philosophical, like this, it's such a huge budget. And, and it is one where I feel like we have little sense, that may just be me coming in relatively new, but little sense of, we get a lot of high-level stuff. And, and, and what I'm interested in is how do we then know how many students are being served by it and how effectively that service is being delivered?
Nicole, I would suggest that we could do that as a report with, as we gather the data that, that they're collecting, and then we could put. Is it a quarterly report too frequently?
So I, so by, so I mean, I'll just give a little quick example, and then yes, a, a coach is required to do. So part of an investment for anyone that's in a coaching position is they have to do an impact plan. And the state provides the, the training and the, and the, they kind of guide, this is what we want you, this is, there's, again, as Renee said, there's a lot of rules that come along with, especially the federal money. So an impact plan is an example of an investment, because a coach is an investment, where they have to track an intervention or a, a practice, and then they recollect data to see this works.
So just like our auditors select certain parts of doing audit.
Yeah, absolutely.
We could select certain kinds of this to present to future board meetings with the data, like this is what.
Absolutely.
We could break it down to smaller components.
And please understand, my comment, yeah, my comment isn't coming because I think there is money being unwisely spent, it's just.
I understood, yeah.
Food of sharing responsibility, it would be really helpful to have a sense of how it, how it's having an impact.
So we'll, we'll take this back, and when we do our, our meeting, we'll break down what future reports we think would be beneficial for the board to hear that brings it down a couple of levels to, here's a service, and here's the data that we have on what impact it is having. And I'm seeing a lot of nod, so thank you for that suggestion. That, that was my whole point. Thank you. Thank you, Nicole, for picking up.
Ray, we work well together.
So the next page in the packet I have highlighted in pink, also a separate PDF in the board packet for the Individuals with Disabilities Education Part B Grant, the I D E A grant that Kate spoke about. Again, similar to what we see when I put the budgets together, I have it distributed here by budget category on the backside or on the second page. Of that would be by department or by function. Most of those functions are, I think, pretty self-explanatory. I did make a note at the bottom that twenty one ninety includes behavior consultation services. Again, a small amount of indirect to help with the administration of the grant. So this year, our allocation was one point four million in I D E A funds. With our rollover, we had one point eight, just over one point eight, and we've budgeted just about all of it. So I think right now, with what we've spent and what we've encumbered, we're at one point four eight million. So we have been rolling over close to, you know, three hundred thousand dollars. We're probably about on target to do that again. Again, this grant operates similar to CFP, and that we get an allocation, we get to use our rollover, but then we also have, if there's any older money, we have an extra three months. So twenty seven months, then spend it all. Questions on I D E A before I jump into S R?
These are all support services, not direct instruction services? Sorry, no, there was instruction.
We do have a, a couple of rational special education teaching positions. It kind of varies annually, we look at need. So for instance, we have one, one paraprofessional right now that's funded out of ARC I D E A, which we'll get to in a moment, because that money is, if our period of performance is essentially expiring in September, we'll be moving that position into our regular annual I D E A.
So, am I correct? I believe I've heard this before, that, that these are, this is supplemental funds, and you're expected as a district or organization to maintain maintenance of effort on your, you know, the main special education.
Correct. Yep, so annually, we have to submit a report to the agency showing that we've basically spent as much on special education in the current year as we did in the prior year, and within a varying amount. They, they do give you a little bit of leeway, but if you, I don't know, because we haven't done it yet. We did pass last year, but if there are extenuating circumstances, you know, if we had a, a teacher who was at the top of the pay scale left and, you know, was replaced by a new teacher, you know, that could be significant. We had a lot of vacancies, so a couple of years ago, we actually did have to go through explaining why we did not meet the maintenance of effort requirements. It's because it was right in the middle of a pandemic, and we had so many vacancies that we were just unable to fill. So yes, we do have to do that annually, otherwise the, the funds would be jeopardized. So many rules we have to follow. Okay, so then in the packet here, for those of you in the room, it's a stapled packet of four pages, each grant is double-sided. If you're at home or wanting to look at this later on online, it is a separate PDF, but it is eight pages long. And that's again, so the first is the S R two grant, which the team here spoke about. So this is a little bit different, because all of these that I'm going to speak about from this point forward are one-time grants. So it's like we've, we've had these funds, quote-unquote, available. You know, we've, we've had to have them budgeted, but again, we have to spend it, get reimbursed. So the S R two, as we said, is expiring September thirtieth of this year. Of the, we've got the full seven point five million budgeted, and we've spent over five point five million, but that doesn't include any of the teamwork that we have going on that's outside of our contracted services, because we don't have a way to encumber that in our expense reports. It also doesn't include any of our summer recovery for this year, and some of the other exterior work that we have planned for this summer as well. So, oh, and actually, before I jump any further into S R, I just wanted to mention that, because S R one concluded in September of last year. That was one point nine five eight million and change. We ended up spending one point nine five four and change, so we left less than forty five hundred dollars of almost two million on the table. They cut us off and made to do an amendment, which is really challenging, because if we have any changes that happen later on in the spring, I can't go in and make any adjustments. So considering, I was, I was really happy with how close we were able to get with that one. The S R two, they are going to give us until the middle of July to make an amendment to spend through the end of September. So I'm not sure why, I'm glad they're giving us more time, but they could cut us off pretty early for S R one.
That's the state cutting us off?
Yes. I think they, they, they try to build themselves in a buffer to do their processing in case there are any issues, and they have to come back to us. But yes, it's the agency.
Time, time thing, because like, it takes fifty minutes.
So the next page in the packet would be the ARCs, the American Rescue Plan, or that third bucket of S R money. So again, we already have that fully approved in the budget. And in France Management Systems, that's just over seventeen million dollars. We do have a requirement to have a minimum of twenty five or twenty percent of this set aside for addressing learning loss recovery. So we certainly have that. And then a big part of the balance is going to be the construction projects, mainly HVAC upgrades. We've just really started spending this money now, we've just spent over half a million dollars. We do have a signed construction contract for two projects that are going to be happening on the Arlington campuses, so that doesn't, that's not included here. That's about eight hundred thousand dollars between the two schools.
Is that part of their, that, do they have your own?
It's all S U money.
It's all S U.
Yep. And then the other schools are currently in design. So we're, various buildings are in various levels of design and things going out to bid. But again, this, this money does expire in September of next year. So Holly and her team are working vigorously to, and we're even pre-qualifying contractors at this point right now, because the, the projects are going to be so expensive, it throws us into another part of state statute, along with federal regulations that we have to follow. So it's so many hoops that we have to jump through, the timeframes that we have to meet. So we're working hard to make sure that we're able to get everything in and spend.
But you see that there are pieces running currently? And when is the expected start? Is it twenty three to twenty four?
Ideally, it would have been this summer, I don't.
I thought it was twenty three and that, but.
A lot of the work, I think, in, in many of the buildings in the Union Elementary District, and actually, I even think maybe at the Mount Anthony Middle School, might be a lot of exterior work, so it might be able to happen. I shouldn't speak for Holly, because now that she's here, she's probably kind of taken that and run with it. But we're trying to reuse the, basically, the, the infrastructure that's already within the buildings as much as possible, and just upgrading, you know, essentially what's there.
Is, is most of that ventilation work?
Yes.
And lighting? Or is there like?
No, the lighting was separate.
Separate.
So it's being done.
Because that goes through.
Energy saving charge.
Yeah, and she's been working a lot with efficiency for, on the lighting. Yes, so it's not federal money, but rather state, state money.
Right.
And another bucket of one-time money is the American Rescue Plan Homeless Grant. So that's the next page in the packet. So that was one hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars that we were allocated. We have spent almost seventy thousand of that so far. A good deal of it is attributed to transportation for those students that are experiencing homelessness. We do use a portion of our, our Title One money to support homelessness as well. But we have seen a significant increase in students that are experiencing homelessness. So this was just extra money that we're able to support.
I mean, this seems like a real little amount, amount of money.
Smallest one.
When you look at the other.
Right.
But that, that goes back to actually giving them homes.
No.
And, 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 it's not allowed.
They have to spend homeless? Is that what you're going to do with this money?
We ask, we all ask, yes.
Crazy.
We can buy them clothing, or buy us a Y Y hot tub. This is federal money coming through the state.
I use. So.
Yeah. And then the final bucket is I D E A. So what we get annually, but they put that, those parameters within the American Rescue Plan. So it's both, kind of, these federal regulations with the I D E A thrown together, that gave us three hundred and twenty thousand dollars, most of which we're using for contracted services for mental health and behavior supports. But that is where we do have that one, there's one position that's currently supported in our I D E A. That'll be moving into our regular I D E A grant next year. So of that three hundred and twenty thousand dollars allocation that we have fully budgeted, we've expended and or encumbered two hundred eighty-eight so far. And I'm pretty sure that we will spend all of it, right, Kate?
Always.
Always.
Three quarters of this goes to contract services.
The behavior consultations and the the mental health supports are. Contracted services are always more expensive. But they've been super helpful. It's kind of what we do whenever we can't find a hire.
What, sorry?
Whenever we can't find that somebody to hire.
Right.
We revert to to a contracted service, and they're basically through agencies that are. Placement agencies, and that's why there's this surplus on the cost.
These are counselors, speech therapists.
Yeah, so this this like rate, this like yeah, your nurse practitioner, or instead of board certified behavior analyst, yes, yeah.
So I just have one question, it might be silly, they'll tell me if I'm being silly, but on one of these. I saw that it's it's three, over three hundred thousand dollars for physical therapy, where I would have thought. Speech therapy or behavioral therapy.
It's like to tell you, yes.
Right here.
So those are actually, we have. Two, two physical therapists, right, that are serving basically our K to twelve population. And they're pretty much fully funded out of this. In a contracted service.
In a contracted service, and what we found was a lot of times, you know, like. For the R S R component. When kiddos were home during the pandemic and then they came back in, if they lived in a single floor house, like if they lived in a a house without steps. They couldn't even navigate the stairs sometimes. So it's a lot of motor, a lot of physical needs of kids that just were not fit. And physically able to use their bodies to do a lot of the things that we would expect children to do in school.
That just seemed like a really high number when you compare it to the speech therapy or all like other needs, it was the highest.
We have.
It was surprising.
Several. Maybe five, if not more funded in the local. Of speech there, so these are just additional, but it's the um.
But may I ask a question about what coaching covers? That's not, that's not coaching, like, not athletic coaching, no.
No.
Academic coaching.
Yeah, so um, and in the title grant, Ray, we have a um, I would just give an example, the district level, we have a um, a reading coach and a math. Coach and a a coach um, supports good first instruction. And so their goal is actually to support the classroom teacher and partner with them to implement evidence based practices.
I I would say that they do um, ongoing embedded professional learning based on the need of the teacher. In 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 collaboration with the teacher, some, I mean, teacher would probably, well, would be potentially some more coaching. Than a veteran teacher that just needs to learn.
Now, these are for for teachers, not for students? Parents, okay.
Yeah, so we have the the co- the coaches, coach the teachers, and then we have interventionists that are working directly with the students.
Okay, so that's the distinction between interventions.
Yes. Yes, and coaches you'll find in Title One. And uh, Title Two, and interventions are Title One. School, I, but yeah, we fund, yeah. So many different.
Is there, is there a giant board somewhere where all these people are tracked? Because I don't see how the.
All I see is like a bear with monkeys.
There's a giant whiteboard in Laura's office that tracks a lot of these.
Color coded. It's true.
Yeah.
And I have multiple spreadsheets with multiple tabs of all the different funding sources of all the different positions, which. Our legacy accounting system used to do for me, but our new system does not, so now I have to track it all manually.
So there's ones actually tracking in the field, how how these people are doing their job? And how do you?
I could talk about some of the behavioral piece, so um, I work, I overlap a lot with Jessa Ordway, our behavioral coach. And um, so basically she, she'll come in, she'll work with the teaching team, a kid that's not safe. And if that kid, if she can't get that kid safe in that environment and and adapt, then that kiddo ends up coming to me. So I kind of get the direct result of the benefit of Jessa's work, um.
You're downstream of the effects.
Yeah, yeah, but uh, we overlap a lot because we've had a lot of complex, you know, um, social emotional needs this year. And she has been, I have, I meet with her every um, Thursday morning at Bennington Elementary. We had overlap, we have once a month um, BCBA and behavioral case manager meetings, including that she leads. And developing systems as well as providing that professional learning for the teachers and even doing individual. Um, demonstrations and professional learning for people implementing individual kid plans. So that's, I mean, that's one like slice of how it looks.
I would give another example, we um, many of these, especially the the people are tied to a specific continuous improvement plan goal. And our continuous improvement plan goal number two is safe and healthy. And that team, which includes a lot of people who are either Title or SR funded. Meet here monthly and we do, and in fact, the upcoming meeting is where they're going to be bringing the. Ideas and sharing what they're going to be turning in next month for their data collection of evidence of advocacy. And so they um, we meet with them monthly to kind of talk about what's going on, what do they need, what are next steps? That's just one slice of another way where we try to stay connected with all of the different human resources that are out there.
So.
John?
Probably not, not a question any of you can answer now, I know we lost a lot of traction with COVID and everything. But these SR funds aren't going to run out, I'm not going to ask you to project.
Correct.
But are we catching up, are we in any strides in catching up from COVID?
I think it's a hard, we think we will know more when we get the spring testing requests to be.
Yeah, I think it, it goes back to what we questioned earlier, what this is, we can come back and get that report. We're not really prepared to answer that.
Yeah, I I didn't expect, I didn't expect a clear cut answer, but just the idea.
I I think it would be good just generally to also say, and I'm sure you've fallen in the meat, like this, the status has changed how we're assessing as well, so there's going to be some variables at at play. As you know, projecting out like when when we will.
Luckily, we have a very robust local assessment system, and so we'll be able to provide some national norm results to say how we're doing and how we're growing. Um, and we've been monitoring those along the way, but to present, I would want to have that. Um, the state results, I think that we'll come back with to talk to you about those in depth at another time, yeah.
Yeah, I I think that would be useful, because uh. We don't see this part into the deep water usually, and uh, we don't. We never seem to me have. Uh, sufficient. Indication of the impact of what we did. And uh. I know, yeah, I'm not saying it's not brought up, but uh, it's been pretty light on actual. You know, well, how kids are doing sort of stuff. And I I know we can't be talking about individual kids, but uh, and certainly can be interested in uh. How they're, how they're doing, I particularly don't find test scores that useful myself, but uh, maybe you do. Uh, but uh. It seems to me there are other qualitative measures that your teachers would know about their folks, their kids. That would be useful to know as a, if there's some way of presenting that. Her voice.
We can add to future attendance to to look at multiple things more than just test scores, especially considering the noise that's going to happen with the fact that. The test scores for this spring are different than the tests the kids took a year ago.
The state and its wisdom has changed horses again, so you can't compare with how it's.
But that's why that district, those district results.
District results, and 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 I I echo, Ray, I think you make a really good point that the multiple measures we should be presenting to all of you and. Since we're public, I do want to say. People in every building of school coordinators and there are people within this building. And the teachers have been doing an extraordinary job of lifting a brand new testing platform over the last couple.
Brand new what, sorry?
Testing.
Testing platform.
Yeah, it's not, it's not wonderful, but sort of.
I I just want to give them them the kudos for um, what they're doing out there with our students.
It's testing platform, not without its problems.
And they have really, yes, they've worked very, very hard and people have done a an extraordinary job of trying to make it as. The best that we possibly can for our kids, because that's who's at the bottom line, so thank you.
My prediction is we're going to be talking a lot about these going forward, especially considering some of them not being here anymore. And what that impact will be, so, what's that?
Funding cliff.
Exactly. I want to make sure, I think that in the room took a lot of the airwaves, I wanted to make sure that those who are. Uh, remote feel 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 that they had the opportunity to ask questions.
Good, thank you, listened attentively.
Okay, great. Um, moving into the next item on the agenda.
I just have a couple of things on us.
Oh, sure, sorry.
Um, we are going to need a special meeting, we have um. Uh, contract, tentative contract settlements with support staff and principals, uh, we're looking at doing a. All board meeting, uh, wouldn't be Arlington, this doesn't apply to their contracts, on a. Tuesday, May ninth, which is the Union Elementary Board meeting, we're thinking. But what we're going to propose is we bump that meeting a little bit later and then hold everybody else's. Uh, joint meeting, they hear one presentation on what the tentative agreement is, and then each individual board vote, you know, the. The round robin meetings of those who have been around before that were done at contract time, because um. We need to move before the second payroll and pay to get some accommodations done, so and. HR needs time to process that, so really the the week of. So I can't really wait till the MAU regularly scheduled MAU meetings, we're all going to do it on Tuesday. More details coming up, but just you can pencil that in, be able to attend by Zoom, you don't have to physically be here, and we'll. Have that meeting and then go right into the Union Elementary. And uh, just uh, one more reminder, you heard this, your other, your other meetings, but in case anyone's listening, that it will be in. Uh, the May newsletter, last day of school is Friday, uh, June sixteenth, uh, and that's it.
Uh, one question, Jim, has like graduation dates been set and for both the high school and middle school or?
Uh, middle school is not, they've set their, still working on their award dates and graduation is, you know, was set when we set the calendar last year, so.
It's the same.
Same, yeah.
Okay, um, item six on the agenda, the chair's report, I have just a couple of things, um, first one is I'm learning the process for agendas setting. Uh, the Wednesday before each of these meetings, uh, or RSU meeting, um. I get a draft agenda sent to me, I'm going to send an email to the board on the Monday before. That, on the Monday before that Wednesday, um, that asks for any agenda items that you all might have, so that I can have that and add it into. The uh, draft agenda that's sent to me, um, I got clarification, I can send that to the entire, that request. For any items that you might have to be added to the agenda, to the entire board, um, it's just when you reply to me, it can't be. Reply all, because then we would run the risk of open meeting laws and um, we, none of us want to do that. So um, I will be, just, I think one of the things that's beautiful about a board is that you have. Multiple people with multiple um, areas that they're going to dial into and pay really close attention to. And so I I can go back and reread minutes and try and pull things out, but um. Anytime you have something that you've, you're feeling passionate about or didn't feel that you got the answer to that you want. That's your opportunity to make sure that it comes back up again. One of the other things that I had uh, talked about several months back, and I wanted to bring it back up was, I think it would be important for us as the SU board, which is overseeing. Overseen and paying attention to the district at large to get a better understanding of education. In this region and the impact of the education. Um, more than just to the students, though of course, that's the most important thing, but um, impact of the SU to the region also. Um, so when I say a picture of the education in the region, I'm thinking, what are the total number of students that we should be educating? What are the total numbers or that that are of age to be educated in the region, what are the total number that we are. Educating within our public schools, where, you know, how much, how many are homeschooled, if we can get it, how many are in private school? Uh, and then flying out a little bit, what's the impact of the um, number of employees? The wage and salary, the overall impact of the SU to this region, um, and all of that is just data that we. I feel like we would be beneficial to us to have um, when we, when we talk with um. Uh, when we make our decisions and then also when we talk with uh, our constituents. Let's see, what else did I have, we talked about SR funds that was on there. And that's really it, that's what I had for my my chair's report tonight.
Thought, can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
On your, on your um, people participating or contributing agenda items. I was wondering if, if there could be note of action items, things that we said for follow up. That could be recorded in the meeting minutes. And then possibly carried forward into the future agendas, just for. Documentation and tracking, I tend to find myself going back through my notes and remembering things that. I said I would do or that someone else said they would do. It would be great if we could make it easier to just keep track of those things by highlighting them in the minutes and then have some section on the agenda where those things just carry forward. If that's appropriate or possible.
So when you. Automatically um, or the, they would be pulled into the future agenda, or that would be up to us to call them out so they can be pulled into the future agenda?
I don't know, how, I mean, how do we keep track of open items?
Well, we.
I guess that's more a question than a, I don't have a recommended solution, but how, how can we keep track of those open action items?
We could have uh, as part of the chair's report, a report on open actions from the agenda, previous agendas. I I usually check the previous minutes to check for those things that I can ask about if I'm interested. In general, that's probably a good idea to have it brought up as part of the. Uh, one of the reports, and that would be the chair's report, I think.
But I think Nicole, you you had asked for action.
If she's talking about items that were brought up and are mentioned in the minutes, that were questions that were to be dealt with, not by. The board, but to be brought to board, and those often die.
Right, and that's why I I I had thought too, if if if, I can certainly go back and read, and and I will.
But but I I think if it's part of your, your. A a standard item in the chair's report, maybe that's.
So actually, when you, if 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 I make that call on the Monday, send an email saying, hey, what do you have for the for the agenda? It may not be its own item on the agenda, but it may be something that I.
Right.
I pulled like.
An action item gets. A little unclear for me, the superintendent, if the board votes on something.
Yeah, that's clear, that's, I mean, that's.
That's clear that that's an action item, and then there's a board member saying like, I'd like to see something on board. I don't see as an action, I mean, I, we can address that, but that's the board chair's call to put that on a future agenda. Uh, if 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 they so choose, you know, is it like, is it the will of the board to have that report, or is it just somebody's individual interest on that report? That's that's the clarification I need.
I had called out the the um. At least coming back with a plan for what what it would look like to get the data for what what is the education current.
Yeah.
Landscape in in our region. And I can ask that of of you as part of my chair's report, but is that the wish of the board?
Well, the chair, you know, in my opinion, and this is my opinion, I'm not the expert here, the board builds the chair with, uh, the. The board builds the agenda with the superintendent, so if you put an item on the agenda based on something you read in the minutes or something that, you know. That you will see on it, that's your prerogative as the chair, right? that you see on it, that's your prerogative as the chair, right? Um, as far as, you know, some of these meetings can go far off to left field with, I'd like to see this and I'd like to see that. That's harder to address unless there's, it's been action by the board. Like, we want to see a breakdown of everything, every coach, what every coach does, what they do. I mean, like that's, you know, you may have an interest in it, but the board may not have an interest in it. So how do we define that as an action? What gets in the minutes is a specific directed question. And uh, they deserve to be either, well, this is the answer or there's no answer or it's still something that needs to be answered.
If it's in the realm of the board's authority.
If it's in the minutes, it's in the realm of the board's authority. That's my point. I mean, it's not considered one of these questions. It's just that they are there and they're open not answered. So if we had a way, it's just, you know, I mean, you've got other things. It's, it's very, it's not that frequent, but it does happen. And uh, it gets, stuff gets dropped. There's way too much stuff that you have to attend to. You and everybody else, but sometimes these questions are interesting to have answered. And so the chair can decide whether there, it's still worth asking.
Right.
You don't have to bring it up if you don't think it was worth it. Thanks, Ray. I just think it ought to be.
Well, and if there, and I think to my point earlier, if I put out a request that says here, I think, you know, what, what would you like to make sure that we talk about? Um, then that's an opportunity too for the members of the board to talk to me.
We do review the minutes when we get them from Richard. And that's, when I put that draft together with A D, we look at what's in the minutes and what was asked. And it's not always as clear as someone in the city, just because something discussed doesn't mean there was necessarily asked for action on it.
Fair. Uh, and with that, I believe um, any, there are no other items, I believe. So uh, item eight on the agenda is just an F Y I. The S B S U budget status report is in the packet as well as the student enrollment report for April two thousand twenty-three. And uh, last item on the agenda would be a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm opposed. Right, can you just adjourn?
Cat TV is celebrating thirty years of community media. Help support Cat TV's next thirty years by becoming a member today. Your membership will help us continue covering meaningful, local content. Thank you for supporting your local community media station.